I'd like to bring this meeting to go over Wednesday, December 28, 2016. Do we stand for the flag, Mr. Menor?
(Inaudible) The United States of America, and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mr. Menor.
Mr. Casey.
Present.
Mr. DeWiggy.
Present.
Mr. Duffey.
Present.
Mr. Blush.
Mr. McHaney.
Present.
Mrs. Zaleski.
Present.
Mr. Schuster.
Present.
Mr. Timlin.
Present.
Mr. Sheridan.
Present.
Each president, one action.
Communications to board, Mr. Menor.
Ah, yes. We had, I'm sorry, we had a meeting this evening, discussed personnel, real estate, and budget matters.
Thank you, Mr. DeWiggy. Okay, public comment. John Wardit.
No, that's Joan Porter-Pone.
I'm sorry, I think it might be Joan.
I live at 221th Street in Scranton. I see item 6.05 in the resolution for adoption, 2017, is general fund budget. So I have some questions with regard to that budget. Is it still $156.5 million?
The current budget that's being proposed is 153,634,117 dollars.
Okay, downsized a little bit. But does that still include a $17 million deficit?
Uh, no, it would include, the difference between proposed revenue and expenditures is 3.3 million.
That's a deficit, right?
Yes.
3.3 million, okay. And you still have, or you're still going to have a $29 million general fund shortfall at the end of the year?
That, we, that, right now, the only, the only confirmed number is 24 million of the 2015 audit. The 2016 number was what we projected. Right now, I don't know whether it'd be higher and/or lower.
Okay. Do you have plans for addressing any shortfall that will occur? Do you have a plan?
I believe so.
Okay. Can you, after I sit down, because I know I only have a few minutes, please address how you've made the changes in these numbers, how you got the $17 million deficit down to 3.3 million, for which I'm very happy, what you might do about any general fund shortfall, and what your opinion is of the likelihood of state intervention, such as the appointment of a receiver. Thank you.
Okay. Rosemary Boylan, Scranton Federation Teachers.
Good evening, directors. Wish everyone a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. I stand before you looking through the board packet this evening, and there are a few issues I'd like to address. First and foremost, the appointment and creation of a job called Dean of Students, which in our opinion is totally unnecessary, it's an expenditure that we don't need. Every high school in this city, every middle school in this city has a principal and a vice principal, or two vice principals, whatever the population of the building requires. And by creating this assignment, this job assignment entitled tonight, that's an additional job that's being created and placed in the Act 93 contract. It's another job. And so now, maybe two or three months from now, somebody's going to come and say, "We need another vice principal." And so that's a big expense. And from the looks of the four steps that are contained in this thing, somebody can walk into the Scranton School District and get hired at a pretty good salary, sixty-some thousand dollars, and then four years later, they're at top salary. There's no teacher in the Scranton School District that walks in here and gets to top salary in four years, and it doesn't indicate any kind of job experience in this thing, and the job isn't posted. It was never posted. All of a sudden, we have a job in the Scranton School District that was never, ever posted. It was created. That's a lot of money for nothing. Vice principals in this district are perfectly capable of handling that kind of an assignment. These job creations are exactly what they are, silliness. I'll note further for the record, that something called a teacher leader was created, and then that title got changed to some kind of thing called school leader. And obviously, we've grieved that, we are pending arbitration on it right now. Now, it seems kind of peculiar, though, that the people who were teacher leaders, and then became school leaders, are now principals in the Scranton School District. That's very peculiar, that without going through the proper procedures, all of a sudden, they're what they started out anyway. Well, somebody must think people watching this are silly in the Scranton School District, when job postings aren't there. Two people were, two people were pushed up to principals' titles and assistant principals' titles, there didn't even, there were no job postings for those two things. There was all job posting for a vice principal at West Scranton High School, there were no job postings for the elementary, none, and two people got them. And they were, one went over to Western Intermediate, one went over to the Woody Uranus. When were they interviewed? When was that job posted? It wasn't. These kinds of things are wrong, and it's costing money, lots of it. And I hate to think that our district, the Scranton School District, wants to follow the course of having grievance arbitration, and grievance arbitration, and grievance arbitration. I know what the cost of those grievance arbitrations are for the Scranton Federation of Teachers, and you're paying the same thing we pay. I would like to point out to this board that since January of 2016, January 1 of 2016, to date, we have filed 32 grievances. Thirty-two grievances out of our collective bargaining agreement can only be thought of as union busting. When you attack a contract that much, you're union busting. It's being allowed. Well, not, no, we're not going to sit still for that. We just filed again six arbitrations, six more, on top of the ones we've already been through, argued and won. This is our collective bargaining agreement that many board members signed off on. Well, in my house, where I grew up, when I sign my name to something, or when I use my name, that means something. And I think when somebody signs a collective bargaining agreement, it ought to mean something. It ought to mean that we stand by what's printed, what's been agreed to, negotiated. We shouldn't have 32 grievances filed in one year, and we certainly shouldn't have the number of grievance arbitrations that we have filed. We just should not. Now, on June 27, this board held a meeting at Scranton High, and the special education plan came up. I spoke against it. The plan. Many, there were at least, at least 250 teachers in the room that night, maybe more, but there were at least 250. Teachers stood up and told this board, and everybody present, that even those who served on the committee, what was being discussed and passed by the Scranton School Board that night, wasn't even the plan that the committee knew about. I heard, not once, at Scranton High, and I heard again at Northeastern Intermediate, a school board meeting, that that special education plan was cost neutral. Neutral. Neither a positive nor a negative funding problem. Now, somebody bought a bridge in Brooklyn, because we have had at least 14 additional paraprofessionals hired, a behavioral specialist, teachers hired, supervisors. What's neutral here? And the rent on the building is going up, because the building is too small to handle the population where our students are located, and each day, there is construction on the third floor of the building, in order to allow students to move to third, so other students can take the smaller classrooms. Do you know that some of those classrooms can't accommodate the number of students in them right now, and so a student has to be taken from that room and put into another room, in a holding, because they can't keep them in the room? It's over the limit? You started off renting a building, I think now you're up to almost $20,000 a month for that. How come? Because somebody, somebody believes this was the right thing to do. I don't understand it. The people who do the job every day, the teachers and the parents, the principals, the vice principals, believe it or not, they do know their jobs. They know what's going on in the buildings, they see it, they experience every day, but nobody's, I don't know if everybody thinks they make it up. They're not making it up. It just isn't working. It's causing calamity, and my guess is, just from raw numbers that we've done, you're at least $2.8 million over. That's not cost neutral. Not by my definition of cost neutral. Nuh-uh. Now, I know Mr. Sunday a long time, and he and I fight like cats and dogs when we have to. That's what we do. But on this, I will look at that budget and audit, and I know my numbers aren't going to be far off. Because we can do that, we can figure out how much these things cost, it's not hard. So, I'm asking you, I believed you did something at a meeting, and you said, and I agreed with you, that you were only going to hire essential. But if we're going to create more jobs and more titles, then I don't even know what half these titles are anymore, and I don't even know the significance of the titles, because there was a time when I could say to somebody, they'd say, "Well, who's that?" And I would say, "Well, that's the supervisor of..." But I can't even say that anymore, because I don't know the titles, and I don't know who the people are. The titles keep changing almost every two months. Basic education in the Scranton School District is what we're about. And I understand your budget, I understand the fact that you're, you have budget problems, but when somebody sells you a bill of goods, it's time to put the brakes on it. And I, for one, am sitting here, I don't even have this budget in front of me, and I would like to see a copy of that budget, so that we can, we can do it. That's what you usually do, is provide a budget, have people study the budget and say, "What's all this?" But I think it's time that you understand, that we understand, from where we sit, we go over, and Mr. Sunday, Mr. Laffey know that, and they'll tell you. There's nothing in your budget and audit that we don't go over, line by line by line. We're in contract negotiations now. And every three years, you know what I hear? My whole life, there's no money. There's no money. There's never money. Yep. Well, somebody better start doing some math, because this isn't right. This isn't right. Because you just heard this lady say 3 million, Rex said approximately three, a little over three? Well, guess what that is equal to? I heard somebody tell me umpteen times in the meeting, 128 equals 128. 128 equals 128. This is some kind of goofy math. And I mean goofy math. So, like the rest of the world, I live in the city, like you, and I pay my taxes here, and I have my whole life, as has my father before me, and his father before that. So when I stand before you, I'm standing not only as the president of the union, but I'm a taxpayer too. And I'm watching this, because I know what I have to do to run my office down the street. I know what Kevin has to do. I know we have to put a budget together, and we live with it. We answer to our auditors too, we answer to the state, we answer to everybody. But this is, this is, this doesn't make sense. It doesn't make sense to say, "We're not doing this, but we're going to create more jobs, just change titles around and throw salaries out there." For what? For what? Why do you have two principals in one building? You used to have a principal and a vice principal. Now you've got two principals in one school. This is not logical. It isn't. And it never, ever existed in this district before, ever. And believe it or not, with all the hoopty-doo about test scores and everything that all I hear about, you want to know something? For my whole career in this district, this district has always produced good test scores. And the only time the test scores aren't good, is when the state decides to manipulate the test data. And they do that regularly, and I'm sure they're going to do it some more. But all of this nonsense has to stop. So, whatever you're going to pass, we will, we will obviously take it apart. But nope, we're not buying it. And I don't think any of you should buy it. You were sold a bridge in Brooklyn. It was meaningless, and it's not working. And if anybody tells you it's working, it isn't working. Go to the schools, and go into the buildings, and talk to the people doing the job. It's not working. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Menor. Kevin Case, taxpayer, SFT.
And taxpayer for quite a while now, too. Good evening, board members. I, I guess this, I'll be the third person now, I still unclear about what you're actually, are you going to pass a balanced budget tonight? Is that the plan? Is that, a balanced budget will be passed? So, the additional $3 million, can you let us know, in the interest of transparency, where that $3 million is coming from?
Three, the proposed budget that's, the board of education will consider, will take the $3.3 million out of the borrowed trust, out of the healthcare trust fund.
Okay, that's from the, from the last meeting?
Correct.
A, under A?
Correct.
In that, okay. Now I understand. Thank you. I, I would encourage the board, two things, just two things. In the future, I mean, so many times I come to board meetings, and under labor relations, I, you know, we all hear nothing at this time. And that's been going on for, for a long time, and as you know, from what Rosemary said, we've got thirty-some grievances. We've had three arbitrations already that have been heard, and one by the SFT, by the way, and we are fairly confident that, and our lawyer tells us, he's confident, that the rest of the grievances that we filed, we will likely win as well. I don't know any reason why this board cannot solve those issues. I don't know any reason why it has to go before an arbitrator, which involves our, you know, the arbitration fees, which involves the lawyer's fees on your side, on our side, you know, there's, there's a lot of money being wasted, if you would simply hear the case and hear the facts about the case, and then render a decision. That could be done for free, you know.
It was the case, we, so we clarified, and I think we clarified a little bit, we instructed our solicitor to overdue grievances with Mrs. Boylan.
We have resolved about half.
Try to clarify, try to clear them up as fast as we can.
We have resolved about half.
And Mr. Menor is correct, but the problem is, as he knows, we no sooner get five grievances solved, he walks out the door, and there's five more.
Well, we promised you tonight.
Because people don't want to follow that contract, that you, while all of you were present, but most of you signed off.
No, we talked over this, and we, the board, are taking a different look at this now, okay? We're starting that forward to make sure that we can stop the boat before it sinks, okay? We're going to, we're going to get on that.
Okay, thank you. And then my last, you know, bit of encouragement for you is to reconsider the resolution that you passed last October, to bid everything that's $10,000 and greater in service contracts. Two auditor generals have made the case, have stated it, have put it in writing in audit reports, that you are likely to save millions of dollars every year by doing just that. So I would encourage you to take another look at that, going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Casey.
Thank you.
Okay, that exhausts our public input, and we'll move on. Two of the minutes, November 9th. Board, motion? Give them a second.
Second.
You have a second. Any question? If no question, roll call.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mr. DeWiggy?
Yes.
Mr. Duffey?
Yes.
Mr. McHaney?
Yes.
Mrs. Zaleski?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Timlin?
Yes.
Mr. Sheridan?
Yes.
Ada Fermin.
Budget and Finance Director Dwight?
Resolution 10D1, it is recommended to the Budget and Finance Committee that the following resolution be considered, list of bill payments in accordance with the bill payment approval policy be approved as per attached, approve that the orders be drawn upon Treasury as follows, December 19, 2016, for $839,303.29, respectfully submitted.
I'll entertain a motion for approval. For the bill list?
Let me just, we just.
Okay, roll call.
Mr. DeWiggy?
Yes.
Mr. Duffey?
Yes.
Mr. McHaney?
Yes.
Mrs. Zaleski?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Timlin?
Yes.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mr. Sheridan?
Yes.
Ada Fermin.
To the members, Resolution 10D2, to the members of the board and directors of Scranton, the school district of the city of Scranton, it is recommendation of the Budget and Finance Committee that the following resolution be considered, the exception bill is as per the bill payment approval policy for the period ended December 28, 2016, be provided as per attached, respectfully submitted.
You have a second. Other question? No question, roll call.
Mr. Duffey?
Yes.
Mr. McHaney?
Yes.
Mrs. Zaleski?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Timlin?
Yes.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mr. DeWiggy?
Yes.
Mr. Sheridan?
Yes.
Ada Fermin.
P3, Resolution P3, to the members of the board, the record, it is the recommendation of the Budget and Finance Committee that the following resolution be approved, whereas in accordance with the real estate tax law, any property not sold at judicial sale shall be listed in a repository of unsold properties. Following properties have been sold and will be returned to a taxpaying status with the Tax Claim Bureau. Map number, PPNL Utilities near PA Turnpike, map number 1230301000201, for the amount of $3,100. PPNL Utilities at Ferdinand Street, map number 12303010002, in the amount of $7,500. Therefore, be it resolved that the school, the school district of the city of Scranton does hereby approve the above referenced properties for a repository sale pursuant to the real estate tax sale law in Section 627 of Set Act. This resolution is subject to the approval of other taxing bodies, respectfully submitted.
You have a second. Other question? No question, roll call.
Mr. McHaney?
Yes.
Mrs. Zaleski?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Timlin?
Yes.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mr. DeWiggy?
Yes.
Mr. Duffey?
Yes.
Mr. Sheridan?
Yes.
Ada Fermin.
10D4, the Budget and Finance Committee presents the following resolution for your consideration. Be it resolved that the delinquent tax report for the month of October 2016 be accepted. A copy of the monthly details available for review in the business office. Under tax, it's $82,454.14. Penalties, $5,539.32. Interest is $7,143.07. The total is $95,136.53. Commission to be deducted is $4,756.87. Net to the district is $90,379.66. Be it resolved that the delinquent tax report for the month of November 2016 be accepted. A copy of the monthly details available for review in the business office. Under tax, it's $105,097.38. Penalty of $8,012.61. Interest is $10,530.02. The total is $123,640.01. The commission is $6,182.17. Net to the district is $117,457.84. Respectfully submitted.
Sir. You have a second. Other question? No question, roll call.
Mrs. Zaleski?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Timlin?
Yes.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mr. DeWiggy?
Yes.
Mr. Duffey?
Yes.
Mr. McHaney?
Yes.
Mr. Sheridan?
Yes.
Ada Fermin.
Resolution 2, I'm at 10D4.
85, you're on the.
I'm on 5 now, okay. Resolution to adopt the 2017 general fund budget. Be it resolved that the board and directors of the school district of the city of Scranton hereby authorizes the expenditure of $153,634.117 upon the adoption of the budget for the year 2017, copies of which are carried hereby and available to the public. Be it resolved further that the district secretary shall file and advertise the budget in accordance with the law. Respectfully submitted.
You have a second. You have a second. Other question? You have no question?
I have some other question, obviously, and just very quickly. I think to answer a few, to answer a few of the questions that, that we've had posted to us tonight, we used the $10,000, $10 million scoop, which we're not going to be able to use next year to, you know, help close the budget. On top of that, I think we dipped into the healthcare trust, over $3 million to help fund that budget. Scoop isn't going to be there next year, and the health, the health fund trust will be above cut in half, so there's monumental challenges coming up, and that are, that are set before us. We didn't have a tax raise this year, however, I don't know if that's necessarily any kind of a win. I just think that when we're facing a $13 million deficit, raising the taxes at this point, I don't think is the appropriate thing to do, and here's why. Over the past few months, I've been in contact with Senator Blake, and I've said this numerous times at work sessions, as well as board meetings, and I looked at a lot of places around the state and what they've been doing. I think Erie went to the state last year, and they had to do a lot of things to get there, and things that I don't necessarily agree with in any way, shape or form, but they got an extra three or four million dollars from the, from the state. They based everything on a per pupil student average. Per pupil student average, Erie's paid about $13,250 per student, they have about 12,000 students. We have about 10,100, and we're given a state reimbursement of about $13,040 per pupil. If you just look at that number alone, Erie is given $1.7 million more than we're giving. Furthermore, Erie's tax incentive that's reimbursed by the state is 55 percent compared to us at 47 percent. Furthermore, they base things on things called your, your tax effort. The tax effort out of 500 schools, we are 39th in the state, but that means is, we've raised mileage more than every other district with the exception of 39 over the past decade. A lot of these statistics I wasn't aware of until the past four. A lot of these statistics I wasn't aware of until the past four or five months gathering stuff, gathering information, and then sitting down with Senator Blake. Senator Blake has pledged to take some action, whether he's going to be successful or not, I don't know. But if our, if our residents are taxed almost higher than anyone else, and we have some of the problems we have in this city, they deserve a break. I don't know how long this is going to last, and I, I'm not even certain if that's the right decision, but it's a decision that I feel comfortable making tonight, and it's not based on a guess, it's based on a calculated effort that is going on between us and the state at this point, to hopefully receive a lot of the things that I think we are owed, and that have been taken away from us and our students without much explanation. So that's why I'm going to be voting in favor of the budget this evening.
Any question? I will be voting in favor of the budget with great reservations, some of them expressed already by Mr. Duffy. I have been a member of this board since the April fifth of twenty thirteen, was elected in the fall of twenty thirteen, I've been through, this is my fourth budget. And in each of these four budgets, we have been forced to borrow in order to balance our budget. For a number of reasons, this will stop now. It can't go forward. We will be unable to borrow at a future time. And the, the causes, we know where the causes rest, but the solutions are placed there on land. My, and I echo Mr. Lesch, who says, to vote against this budget and to hasten some type of receivership would, would damage what our students have to experience. It would, it would put this district into convulsions, as far as I see. I taught in this district for thirty-five years, I've lived in this town my entire life. This school district means more to us, it means more to the future of this community than we could even put a dollar figure on. But we have to do what we can to keep our doors open. So I will be voting yes, but I do not like the idea that we have to borrow for four straight years, as well as raise taxes for four straight years, three straight years. In fairness, it's my obligation to the students of this district that I will be voting yes on this, because it would be disastrous for that, not to that, for us not to pass this budget. Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to comment on this still. When I was elected to this board, I took a note, I put my right hand up, made an obligation to this district, but to the citizens of our city. And I've watched over the years that we have to raise taxes and ask to raise taxes every year. And I see the citizens out there, I see the senior citizens out there. For instance, I'm just going to use one example, the senior citizen was in the drugstore in front of me, and she was writing a check, she didn't know who I was, and she was crying as she wrote, she says, I don't know next month if I can pay my prescriptions or pay my taxes. And that got me right here. It's time, it's time that we cannot go back to the citizens again and help. I fully understand, as the board member and the board president, that we have big problems, and we have to start looking in-house at our problems first, and we have to start resar, resolving our problems in-house. Our biggest problems with the state of Pennsylvania, that's the lack of funding, the impasse of a budget, and a lot of other stuff that we have not gotten from the state. Senator Blake is working with us, and Mr. Duffy, I give you credit for going with him and sitting with him, and Mr. Schuster, and everybody who's on this board. The last four weeks, we've been, our solicitor, Mr. Menora, I got to give you credit, you've been working hours upon hours upon with myself and other board members up till yesterday, hours upon hours trying to close this budget and try to work it out to where we don't hurt education, and we don't hurt the citizens of this city. And I'm, and I want to thank everyone involved here for the hours that we all put in, every one of us. This is not an easy task for any one of us here, but it's something that we need to do, is to start looking where, without hurting anybody, but trying to work the differences out in our district, to make sure that we still keep moving forward, but yet we're fair to the taxpayers of this city. By passing the budget tonight with a no tax raise, is saying thank you to the citizens for trusting us and working with us, and we don't know where we're going next year, like Mr. Dwight is. You know, we can't do the scoops, we're not going to be able to. At least this year, we got to the point where we can give the taxpayer a little bit of break, and I'm proud of everyone who's doing that. Thank you very much. Okay, anybody else have a question? Roll call.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Timlin?
Yes.
Mr. Casey?
No.
Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrick?
Yes.
Mrs. Oleski?
Yes.
Mr. Sheridan?
Yes.
Seven affirmative, one negative, motion passed.
Be it further resolved that the Board of Directors of the Scranton School District hereby levies a tax of one point, excuse me, one-two-three-point-seven-seven mils per one thousand, which is the current mileage dollars of assessed valuation under real estate pursuant to authority of the Act of the General Assembly, March tenth, nineteen forty-nine, PL thirty, Article six, Section six-seven-two as amended. Respectfully submitted. Second. You're in a second. Other question? No question, roll call.
Mr. Timlin?
Yes.
Mr. Casey?
No.
Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrick?
Yes.
Mrs. Oleski?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Sheridan?
Yes.
Seven affirmative and negative, motion passed.
Anything else to be recognized? Number three, Local Tax Enabling Act of nineteen sixty-five, I wish I was talking Mr. Sheridan. Five-one-one taxes, be it further and separately resolved that under the authority of the Local Tax Enabling Act of nineteen sixty-five, Act five-eleven, PL twelve-fifty-seven, of the Act of the Assembly of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and in compliance with the school laws of Pennsylvania as amended, there is levied, claimed, and imposed taxes for the calendar year twenty seventeen, and that all Act five-eleven taxes herein after levied under the Local Tax Enabling Act of nineteen sixty-five are intended to generate the maximum amounts of tax revenues allowed and permitted by law, and that where the City of Scranton and/or the school district, the City of Scranton have perfected claims to proportionate shares of any of the herein after recited Act five-eleven taxes, that these claims shall persist and remain in force and effect, and that where a maximum legal levy has been hereby made, that the same shall only be adjusted or reduced in accordance with the law to that amount which shall represent the proportionate share of the school district of the City of Scranton, and the subjects and subject matter of taxes levied by this school district of the City of Scranton for the year twenty seventeen are intended to be within limits of the school district of the City of Scranton, quorum minus of the City of Scranton, while the aggregate of taxes collected by similar levies, if any, by the City of Scranton are separate distinct apart from the taxes levied hereunder by the school district of the City of Scranton unless otherwise provided by law, and shall be collected by tax collectors herein named and appointed or herein after named, and appointed for which purpose there is continued levied and imposed the following Act five-eleven taxes, separate resolutions for each of which follow. Levy one, earned income tax. Levy two, mercantile business privilege tax license. Levy three, mercantile tax. Levy four, business privilege tax. Levy five, occupation privilege tax. Levy six, realty transfer tax. Where, wherefore, the above taxes are continued for twenty seventeen and shall continue in full force and effect unless repealed or amended by law or action of successor school boards. Respectfully submitted. Second. You're in a second. Other question? Roll call.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrick?
Yes.
Mrs. Oleski?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Timlin?
Yes.
Mr. Sheridan?
Yes.
Ada Fermin.
Number three, five-eleven tax levy one, earned income tax credit, continually levy of one percent, being a tax imposed upon salaries, wages, commissions, earned income, earned income and other compensation of residents of the school district of the City of Scranton and upon net profits earned by such residents from all businesses, professions, and all other activities, salaries, wages, commissions relating to earned income, respectfully submitted. Second. You're in a second. Other question? You're no question, roll call.
Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrick?
Yes.
Mrs. Oleski?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Timlin?
Yes.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mr. Sheridan?
Yes.
Ada Fermin.
Five-eleven tax levy two, mercantile business privilege tax license, continually tax on all firms, persons, and entities engaged in occupations and businesses at the rate of five dollars for the privilege of doing business to be known as school license tax, respectfully submitted. Second. You're in a second. Other question? You're no question, roll call.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrick?
Yes.
Mrs. Oleski?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Timlin?
Yes.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrick?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Timlin?
Yes.
Mr. Sheridan?
Yes.
Ada Fermin.
Number three, five-eleven tax levy number three, mercantile tax, continuing and claiming a mercantile tax on persons, firms, and entities engaged in business as follows. Wholesale dealers or vendors at the rate of point zero-zero-zero-four-five-two on each dollar of gross volume of business, on retail dealers or vendors at the rate of point zero-zero-zero-six-seven-nine on each dollar of gross volume of business, based upon annual gross receipts for the year twenty seventeen, or by rules and regulations as applicable and/or for succeeding years thereafter to be known as mercantile tax. Respectfully submitted. Second. You're in a second. Other question? You're no question, roll call.
Mr. McCandrick?
Yes.
Mrs. Oleski?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Timlin?
Yes.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Sheridan?
Yes.
Ada Fermin.
Number four. Business privilege tax, continually tax upon the privilege of engaging in a business at the rate of point zero-zero-five-one-three per dollar of gross annual receipts, that's five dollars and thirteen cents per thousand, to be known as the business privilege based upon annual receipts for the preceding year, i.e. twenty seventeen, respectfully submitted. Second. You're in a second. Other question? Roll call.
Mrs. Oleski?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Timlin?
Yes.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrick?
Yes.
Mrs. Oleski?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Timlin?
Yes.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrick?
Yes.
Mrs. Oleski?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Timlin?
Yes.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrick?
Yes.
Mr. Sheridan?
Yes.
Ada Fermin.
Number six, the realty transfer tax, continually tax on the transaction of the transfer of real property. Each person who accepts the delivery of any document or on whose behalf delivery of any document is accepted shall be subject to paying a tax of one-half, of one percent, of the value of the property represented by each document, excepting those excluded by law to be known as realty transfer tax. The collection which shall be through the recorder of deeds and, and for Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania, for which purpose the said recorder of deeds is hereby deputized. Respectfully submitted. Second. You're in a second. Other question? You're no question, roll call.
Mr. Timlin?
Yes.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrick?
Yes.
Mrs. Oleski?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Timlin?
Yes.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrick?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Timlin?
Yes.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrick?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Timlin?
Yes.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Sheridan?
Yes.
Ada Fermin.
Number four. Business privilege tax, continually tax upon the privilege of engaging in a business at the rate of point zero-zero-five-one-three per dollar of gross annual receipts, that's five dollars and thirteen cents per thousand, to be known as the business privilege based upon annual receipts for the preceding year, i.e. twenty seventeen, respectfully submitted. Second. You're in a second. Other question? Roll call.
Mrs. Oleski?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrick?
Yes.
Mrs. Zaleski?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Timlin?
Yes.
Mr. Sheridan?
Yes.
Ada Fermin.
Resolutions to File of Solicitor. The Appointment of Real Estate and/or 511 Tax Collector. Be it resolved that William Fox and/or his legal successor is recognized and/or appointed as a collector of taxes for the year 2017, or until withdrawn by action of the Board of Directors of the School District of the City of Scranton for levies as follows: One, real estate taxes; two, local service taxes; three, business privilege taxes; four, mercantile taxes; five, school license tax. Be it further resolved that the Board of Directors of the School District of the City of Scranton shall require the posting of adequate bonds in conformity with law and/or based on previous practice in these same premises, which shall be properly approved by the Court and/or the District Solicitor, and filed with the District Secretary. Respectfully submitted.
Second.
Here in a second. Under the question. Here are no questions. Roll call.
Mr. Dwyane?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrick?
Yes.
Mrs. Zaleski?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Timlin?
Yes.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mr. Sheridan?
Yes.
Ada Fermin.
Appointment of the 511 Tax Collector Earned Income Tax Collector. Whereas the Scranton School District has levy assessed and provided for the collection of certain local taxes in compliance with and pursuant to the Authority of Local Tax Enabling Act of 1965, Act 511, Public Law 1257, of the Act of the Assembly of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and in compliance with the School Laws of Pennsylvania, and whereas the Scranton School District is a member of Lackawanna County Tax Collecting Committee, TCC, pursuant to the Act 32 of 2008, and whereas the TCC has hired Burghheimer Associates to collect earned income taxes by the Scranton School District, including said earned income taxes that are or may become delinquent, and whereas pursuant of Act 192 of 2003, 2004, General Assembly of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, the Scranton School District has the right to impose a cost of collection of unearned income taxes that become delinquent and/or remain due and unpaid. Now therefore be it resolved that the Scranton School District hereby authorizes the following: One, the Scranton School District appoints Burghheimer Associates as its Earned Income Tax Collector for the initial tax year beginning January 1, 2017, continuing through December 31, 2017. Number Two, the Scranton School District approves and adopts the Cost of Collection Schedule attached hereto Exhibit A and made part of the resolution to be imposed by Burghheimer Associates, and any taxpayer whose earned income tax becomes delinquent and/or remain due and unpaid, and. Number Three, Burghheimer Associates is authorized to retain said cost of collection set forth in the attached Cost of Collection Schedule incurred in recovering delinquent taxes, and assessed to the delinquent taxpayer as allowed by law, and. Number Four, this authorizing resolution is effective immediately upon approval. Respectfully submitted.
Second.
Here in a second. Under the question. Here are no questions. Roll call.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrick?
Yes.
Mrs. Zaleski?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Timlin?
Yes.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mr. Dwyane?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Sheridan?
Yes.
Ada Fermin.
Designation of Depositories for Tax Collections. Be it resolved that the First National Bank of Clarkson, Pennsylvania, be hereby designated depository in which the funds and monies in the custody of William Fox and Burghheimer Associates or their legal successors may be deposited. Respectfully submitted.
Second.
Here in a second. Under the question. No questions. Roll call.
Mr. McCandrick?
Yes.
Mrs. Zaleski?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Timlin?
Yes.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mr. Dwyane?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Sheridan?
Yes.
Ada Fermin.
Subject of appointment of administrative hearing officer. Be it resolved that William Fox and/or his legal successor is recognized and/or appointed as the administrative hearing officer pursuant to Act 50 of 1998, at Section 8430, Subparagraph 4, and shall continue to provide the taxpayer review or appeal process as was in offered on the effective date of this statute, Act 50 of 1998. Be it further resolved that any and all forms, rules, as well as the practices or procedures previously utilized by the tax collector, or the effective date of this statute be adopted. Respectfully submitted.
Second.
Here in a second. Under the question. Here are no questions. Roll call.
Mrs. Zaleski?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Timlin?
Yes.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mr. Dwyane?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrick?
Yes.
Mr. Sheridan?
Yes.
Ada Fermin.
Be it resolved, taxpayer bill of rights disclosure statement. Be it resolved that pursuant to Act 50 of the 1998, at Section 8423, the attached taxpayer bill of rights and disclosure statement be adopted. Respectfully submitted.
Second.
Here in a second. Under the question. Roll call.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Timlin?
Yes.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mr. Dwyane?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrick?
Yes.
Mrs. Zaleski?
Yes.
Mr. Sheridan?
Yes.
Ada Fermin.
The Scranton School District Resolution Authorizing the Incuring of Tax and Revenue Anticipation Debt, and the Issuing of Tax and Revenue Anticipation Note, in the Maximum Principal Amount of Nineteen Million, accepting the offer of First National Bank and establishing the Terms of the Note. Whereas, the School District of the City of Scranton, Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania, the School District, anticipates current revenues as yet uncollected, and whereas, the School District requires additional funds for current and anticipated expenditures to fund anticipated deficits, and whereas, the School District has determined that it is necessary to borrow for the purposes of meeting current and anticipated expenses for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2017, by issuing a note to be repaid from the receipt of anticipated taxes and revenues, and whereas, First National Bank of Pennsylvania, the bank, has submitted to the School District a proposal to purchase the Proposal Tax and Revenue Anticipation Note of 2017 of the School District dated December 16, 2016, and the School District desires by the adoption of this resolution to accept such proposal and authorize the issuance and sale of its tax and revenue anticipation note. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of School Directors of the School District of the City of Scranton, and it is hereby resolved by the Authority of Said or the Talents Purged and Attached. Respectfully submitted.
Second.
Here in a second. Under the question. Here are no questions. Roll call.
Mr. Timlin?
Yes.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mr. Dwyane?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrick?
Yes.
Mrs. Zaleski?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Sheridan?
Yes.
Ada Fermin.
Thank you for the recess, Mr. Sheridan. Yes, I'm done. Okay. We went to personnel.
Personnel Director W.
Yes, Mr. President. Resolution 10 J1. To the Members of the Board of School Directors of the City of Scranton, it is the recommendation of the Personnel Committee that the attached list of appointments, assignments, reservations, leave of absence, and professional contracts is approved. Appointments are effective upon receipt of proper criminal records, immigration, and medical, and child abuse reports. Salaries are in accordance with the collective bargaining agreements. Respectfully submitted.
Second.
Here in a second. Under the question.
Under the question. Just to go over this, Mr. Sunday. We have two substitutes, long-term and a long-term permanent sub. They're in the budget.
That is correct.
All right. Going down. We have number one under appointments. We're going to remove the acting title. Is that a change in salary?
No. There'll be no change in salary.
So that's the current salary. Number two. Is it possible to get coverage for the end of the year with these principals here and wait till next year to hire this position?
I don't, I don't know the answer for that.
The superintendent isn't here, but.
They're talking calendar year or school year?
For the school year, I guess. Right now, with the budget that we have, it seems like we could have some savings here with this one.
How?
A hundred thousand dollar salary.
Well, who fills the spot? Who does evaluations?
I don't know. I'm asking if can there be coverage?
No. We couldn't cover two positions, for sure. Probably couldn't cover one. Honestly, Tom. You know, seriously.
Yeah, that's my question. Which is budgeting out on the turn.
I mean, whether it's active or appointed, I mean, someone has to be here. Really. I mean, the, and Mr., I'm going to interject here for a second. HR could help me with this. Remember, what we're mandated by law is that every single teacher must be observed under the Danielson Method. Like that, there's time constraints because of that method that makes, like, dual coverage really impossible. I mean, it really does. It has to be a certified administrator to cause it.
Yeah, I understand. I just.
I think the answer here. It's just a way to save money. If we're mandated by law.
There's no way over this. There really isn't. And, you know, we, in the case of these two elementary schools, they have to be covered. You know, one is large, by the way. They have to be covered. That, I mean, that's my opinion. That's, I guess, it's, it's remove the superintendent who's on vacation. I mean, I have Education Committee Chair, and after thirty-five years in the district, I do have a little familiarity with it. Honestly.
Mr. Gay, repending the vote. Our number two on Section E, coming out of district, did we get a potential start date for this individual, or no?
We have not.
We have not, okay.
It'll probably.
A district can hold a person up to sixty days.
Yeah.
So they're being officially appointed tonight, so it could be any time within the next sixty days. I don't expect it to be sixty days, but I haven't received notification at any start.
So that's what you expect of the max.
So, Bill, what Mr. Dwyane said, Director Dwyane saying, we're kind of mandated, right? Under law that we have to fill this.
For evaluations? Yeah, we do have to evaluate tenure teachers once and non-tenure teachers twice during the school year.
I guess my question would be, if it's a sixty-day process, that's two months from now.
Right.
Then we only have another two to three months for the end of the year. Would we save money to wait until the beginning of next school year to bring this person up?
Well, if we have to wait the sixty days, we're going to hold our person sixty days. So there would still be someone there.
So they're getting paid away. So somebody's there waiting.
Yeah.
Anything else under question? Roll call.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mr. Dwyane?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrick?
Yes.
Mrs. Zaleski?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Timlin?
Yes.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mr. Dwyane?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Sheridan?
Yes.
Ada Fermin.
Number Six. The Realty Transfer Tax. Continuing to Tax on the Transaction of the Transfer of Real Property. Each Person who Accepts the Delivery of any Document, or on Whom Behalf Delivery of any document, is accepted shall be subject to paying the tax of one half of one percent of the value of the property represented by each document, excepting those excluded by law to be known as Realty Transfer Tax. The collection which shall be through the Recorder of Deeds and/ and for Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania, for which Purpose the Said Recorder of Deeds is hereby Deputized. Respectfully submitted.
Second.
Here in a second. Under the question. Here are no questions. Roll call.
Mr. Dwyane?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrick?
Yes.
Mrs. Zaleski?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Timlin?
Yes.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mr. Dwyane?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Sheridan?
Yes.
Ada Fermin.
Number Seven. The Vocational Education Director Timlin. To the Members of the Board of School Directors of the City of Scranton, it is the recommendation of the Vocational Education Committee that the following is approved. Be it resolved that Director James Timlin be appointed as the representative of the Scranton School Board to the Board of Directors of the Career Technology Center of Lackawanna County for the term of December 2016 through December 2019. Respectfully submitted.
Second.
Here in a second. Under the question.
Under the question. Mr. Mark, can you just hear the phrases associated with the three sentences?
Yeah. Two of them were additions to trust funds in the amount of six thousand dollars, and one was twenty thousand dollars.
Anything else?
I didn't, just for the record, I didn't represent the district in those cases.
Anything else under question? Roll call.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrick?
Yes.
Mrs. Zaleski?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Timlin?
Yes.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mr. Dwyane?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Sheridan?
Yes.
Ada Fermin.
Subject of appointment of administrative hearing officer. Be it resolved that William Fox and/or his legal successor is recognized and/or appointed as the administrative hearing officer pursuant to Act 50 of 1998, at Section 8430, Subparagraph 4, and shall continue to provide the taxpayer review or appeal process as was in offered on the effective date of this statute, Act 50 of 1998. Be it further resolved that any and all forms, rules, as well as the practices or procedures previously utilized by the tax collector, or the effective date of this statute be adopted. Respectfully submitted.
Second.
Here in a second. Under the question.
Under the question. With this position, originally this was a full-time position, and now it's a part-time position per each IEP?
No, it wasn't a full-time position previously. It was a, based, it was a, actually, previous person did it at an hourly rate, this, this person's doing it as a per IEP.
Okay, so that will be a savings.
That will be a savings.
All right, thank you.
Anything else under question? Roll call.
Mr. McCandrick?
Yes.
Mrs. Zaleski?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Timlin?
Yes.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mr. Dwyane?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Sheridan?
Yes.
Ada Fermin.
Vocational Education Director Timlin. To the Members of the Board of School Directors of the City of Scranton, it is the recommendation of the Vocational Education Committee that the following is approved. Be it resolved that Director James Timlin be appointed as the representative of the Scranton School Board to the Board of Directors of the Career Technology Center of Lackawanna County for the term of December 2016 through December 2019. Respectfully submitted.
Second.
Here in a second. Under the question. Under the question, I'd like to say that I've got some response, Jimmy, from the people up there, and they're, they honor you, and fully respect as a director up there representing this board, and you've got a fantastic job, and I'd give it another year up there.
Thank you. And the food is delicious.
Oh, yeah. The food is lovely.
I do, I do have to say, it's a great program they have at Career Technology. People are very prepared. Dr. Bailey did a wonderful job in the town. I'm more than happy to represent the board.
Very good.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Mrs. Zaleski?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Timlin?
Yes.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mr. Dwyane?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Be it further resolved that the Board of School Directors accepts Stanley Sable as an Act 93 employee. Respectfully submitted.
Second.
Here in a sec, here in a second, under the question?
Under the question. I heard it earlier tonight that, that this, I'm wondering, is this job already exists? Is that correct? We're just adding it to the Act 93?
Mm-hmm.
Has this been approved, like, has this salary table been approved through Act 93? Do they have to approve this?
They, they, I believe, Mr. Minore, you, you worked that out, right?
My understanding is that they, they have agreed to approve it.
Yeah. I, I have presented it to the head of Act 93. It's, it's in line, it's in accordance with everyone else's schedule in Act 93.
Okay, and then, with this addition of the Act 93, is this, is this an increase in salary from his current salary right now?
Well, he came to us essentially when, when the district used the Camelot Corporation. He came in with the first Lincoln Jackson Academy group. And, uh, so he's been employed in that capacity with them until this fall. He's there in lieu of a second vice principal, which we used to have at West and we don't now. And it provides us with a savings.
Yeah. I got this, the question is, once we pass this resolution, does the salary increase or is it?
Yeah, there is, in the scale, there's a.
I see the scale, I don't know what kind of savings.
Current is with six, sixteen, that's what the individual was brought in at.
Okay, so number one under 2016 now?
Right. This is, this is his current.
Okay. Well, let me ask you this then. So prior to moving him to Act 93, there was no salary schedule for this position because it was the first time.
First time we used him.
So he carried the salary from Camelot or, or we just came up with a salary? I'm not.
It's clear, same salary since he started with Camelot. I'm, and I'm not sure if you remember this. When we brought Camelot under the district ownership, where we, we entered our lease with them, pretty much honored, and Bill, you can help me with this, but we pretty much honored what their pay scale was because a number of their people, well, like this position, we didn't have.
I don't even have.
But, and, and we pretty much honored their pay scale that they brought it. We brought them in under the, the, the standard that they were at because we didn't have anything to go by. You know, we weren't hiring principals. Other teachers went, you know, they were members of the Federation, they're members of collective bargaining. This was, like, this and the text were renewed.
So basically, these are, there's three administrative positions at West Scranton High School. This is going to be one of the three. In the past, were there three administrative positions?
Yes, that's right.
There was a principal and two vice principals, correct?
Right, right.
So there's no increase in salary whatsoever?
Yeah, it actually saves.
It's a savings. Is that correct?
Correct.
And there's a differential on the first step of, I guess you could say, now the student's and the vice principal's position?
Yes.
And it's a savings in our favor.
Yes.
But this, in this capacity, this person can't do evaluations, though?
No, no.
Or discipline? Or, where does it lie? Okay.
Anything else, under the question? Roll call.
Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
No.
Mr. McCandrick?
Yes.
Mrs. Zaleski?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Timlin?
Yes.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mr. Sheridan?
Yes.
Seven affirmed of one negative condition.
Anything else under personnel, Mr. Duffy? No, Mr. President. Special Education Director, Zaleski.
N1, to the members of the Board of Directors. The Special Education Committee hereby recommends the following resolution for your consideration. Whereas, the school district of the city of Scranton is subject to administration procedures and several suits within the appropriateness of the student's special education program has been challenged, or suits have been filed in the matters of 2015/2016 MB, 2015/2016 CH, 2015/2016 KP, and whereas the parties have reached a settlement agreement in the matters upon the terms and condition previously provided for your consideration. And therefore be it resolved that the settlements as indicated above be approved upon the terms and conditions as described. And the superintendent or directors of special education are hereby authorized to execute any matters or all documents necessary to consummate these matters. Respectfully submitted.
Second.
Here in a second, under the question?
Under the question, Mr. Minore, can we just hear the prices associated with the three settlements?
Yeah. Two, uh, two of them were additions to trust funds in the amount of six thousand dollars, and, uh, one was, uh, twenty thousand dollars. I didn't, I didn't, just for the record, I didn't represent the district in those cases.
Anything else, under the question? Roll call.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrick?
Yes.
Mrs. Zaleski?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Timlin?
Yes.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Sheridan?
Yes.
Ada Fermin.
N2, is the recommend, to the members of the Board of School Directors of the city of Scranton, is the recommendation of the Special Education Committee that the following be approved. Whereas, the Scranton School District participates in a school-based program as administered by the Department of Human Services. Whereas, the health-related services in a student's IEP must be authorized or described by a licensed practitioner acting within the scope of the practice. Whereas, this is a condition of accepting medical access payments in the school-based access program. Whereas, Debbie Now, certified registered nurse practitioner, meets the requirements of the school-based access program. Whereas, the contracted rate for each IEP is ten dollars. Therefore be it resolved that the Scranton School Board of Directors gives approval to contract Debbie Now to authorize health-related services in a student's IEP within the school-based access program. Respectfully submitted.
Second.
Here in a second, under the question?
Under the, under the question. With this position, originally this was a full-time position and now it's a part-time position for each IEP?
No, it wasn't a full-time position previously. It was a, based, it was a, actually, previous person did it at an hourly rate. This, this person's doing it as a per ID rate.
So that will be a savings.
That will be a savings.
Thank you.
Anything else, under the question? Roll call.
Mr. McCandrick?
Yes.
Mrs. Zaleski?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Timlin?
Yes.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Sheridan?
Yes.
Ada Fermin.
I have nothing to add.
Thank you, your answer. Vocational education, Director Timlin.
To members of the Board of School Directors of the city of Scranton, it is the recommendation of the Vocational Education Committee that the following is approved. Be it resolved that Director James Timlin be appointed as the representative of the Scranton School Board to the Board of Directors of the Career Technology Center of Lackawanna County for the term of December 2016 through December 2019. Respectfully submitted.
Second.
Here in a second, under the question? Another question, I'd like to say that I've got some response, Jimmy, from the people up there, and they're, they honor you. You've been fully respected for a director up there, representing this board, and you've done a fantastic job. I'd give it another year up there.
Thank you. And the food is delicious.
Oh, yeah, the food is lovely.
Head of the area. I, I do, I do have to say, it's a great program to have the career technology. People are very professional. Dr. Bellings did a wonderful job. More than happy to represent.
Very good.
Thank you.
Roll call. Roll call.
Mrs. Zaleski?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. Timlin?
Yes.
Mr. Casey?
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrick?
Yes.
Mr. Sheridan?
Yes.
Ada Fermin.
Anything else, question, Timlin? Under the President's report. I'd just like to say, earlier this evening, and I want to apologize for all of us, people in here probably here are a little bit heated conversation in the board, in the back room. It's not that we were fighting. It's not that we were screaming at each other. We were just addressing some of our concerns about, you know, we all go into this budget with a heavy heart. We look at the education of all our children and, and this administration. We look at our taxpayers and what we need to do to keep the city moving forward. And it's, again, I apologize that we had to get in today a little bit of that, but we were just addressing each other and talking to each other a little louder than we expected. But we all, everyone on this board is hard as in this school district. And I just want to apologize again and thank you again for all our directors and our registration, our solicitors for doing a great job to bring this budget to where it's at. A real job for them. And with that.
Mr. President, can I ask for just sixty seconds?
Sure.
We, in the spring of 2013, we had some very sincere members of our teaching staff come to us with a plea to not cut the arts or music in the school district. And, and everyone on the board, and I know you were a member of the board at that time, and so was Mr. Lesh. We all looked at you and said, why? Why are we, but there was no plans to do it, there was no discussion to do it. There was no idea that it entered anybody's mind about cutting the arts, music, art, et cetera, in the school district. And recently, there's been a petition being circulated via social media to beg the Scranton School District not to cut art in the school. And I, I, I have not heard, I won't speak for any other member of the board but myself, but in any of our deliberations, whether it's executive session, work session, committee meetings, no one's ever discussed, ever, cutting barter music in the Scranton School District. And I, and I hope to dispel that fear tonight. There, there's no plan by us to cut harder music.
And that, Director Dwyer, you're correct. And, and as the President, the leader of the, the agenda here, we have never talked about cutting one program in school. A month ago, there was a rumor that music was going to get cut right out of the way. That's not true. It's never been true. We've never looked at cutting one program in this school district because we, each individual, knows the importance of music in every program in this education in the Scranton School District. So that is just, it's a lot that we did not do that.
Thank you for the time. Thank you for the time.
Would I make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Adjourn.